Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting in order of the Newman City Council and Redevelopment Agency of February 14, 2006. Please stand for the pledge and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its power.
Please join me in a word of prayer. God, we want to thank you for us making it here safely this evening. Pray that you guide this council in its decision-making process, and we also pray for those that are protecting the freedoms that are so precious to us. In these and other things, we ask in your name, amen.
Thank you, Tim. Can we have roll call, please?
Present.
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 Present. Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. Coming on this evening. Ceremonial matters, we have two this evening. First one is a police department badge pinning. Chief?
Well, Mayor and City Council, it's a great honor to come back before you and not say I have anybody leaving our department, that we have a new person onboard. Do I have Freddie Ortiz, please, come up? Tell you a little bit about him. You can tell, he looks young, but he's really a pretty old guy. Let me tell you a little bit about Freddie here. He actually has been in law enforcement for quite a few years. Started out as an explorer with the Los Banas Police Department, was with them for about four years, and then he moved on and became a reserve officer with the Dos Palos Police Department, and was with them for about a year and four months before we were able to entice him to come over here. And I'd like to have, why don't you introduce, he has got a fiancee who's also in a uniform, and could you introduce her as well?
Yeah, pardon.
Very good. She works for Solidad Police Department. Maybe you can entice her to come a little north, I don't know. In any case, what we'd like to do is, do you have your badge?
Oh, I don't have it.
Your mom has it? And her name is, is it Gail? Gail, could you please come up, Gail? It's kind of a local guy, he's out of Los Banas. And with that, if you'd like to place a badge on him, you know, first, you have to take a, when you've got blood coming out, that's when you gotta stop.
No blood, please, I might faint.
Very good. Did I just send you a letter from the other side of the country there?
Um, did I have my mom's business?
I thought it was her sister.
Very good. We're very happy to have him onboard. He started with us on February, or February 1st. Good. Oh, okay. Oh, come over this way.
Man, these guys are picky, aren't they?
Okay.
Why don't you come up here, too? You're in a uniform.
Yeah.
You know, we are taking laterals.
Very good. He's with, he's, started with us on February 1st of this year, and he's currently in our real training officer program. And with the experience he's got, I'll probably go through that very quickly. So, with that, I think we're gonna retire off to some cookies and cake and those kind of things.
Well, would you guys stay for the proclamation for Black History Month?
Okay.
And I'll say this, I'm eighteen years in law enforcement. Welcome you, my colleagues, I'm sure would concur with me. We really are enthusiastic when we do these presentations and the family comes out, 'cause it's really important to the city. Oftentimes, as city leaders, we talk about our retention and people coming in and leaving us, but the program, I think, is taking some of the steps forward where we're becoming more solid. I think this council really supports that, and we've looked at it from a perspective of keeping as many officers as we can budgetary-wise and as well, so just wanna commend you on your efforts, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome aboard Freddie, and I think what Tim was trying to say is we hope we see your face around here for many years to come. Welcome.
And you're gonna have to close that gap, you know, Solidad, Newman.
Thank you. Also, we have a proclamation for Black History Month. Councilmember Parker will read that for us.
And with, you know, levity, we like to laugh and joke, and oftentimes, I might be one that facilitates that. It's given me a privilege, if you will, to have written these proclamations for, I guess, perhaps about the last five years. And one aspect of that, Officer Hamm, I believe, is the first African-American officer that was hired in the city of Newman, and since that time, Officer Peoples, a second African-American officer, has been hired by the city. I don't think we've ever had a female officer, though.
Yeah.
Oh, have we? We've had one, okay. Okay, a long time ago, so it's been a while, so, like I said, we are accepting latter. Without much further ado, proclamation. Whereas the city of Newman wishes to recognize contributions of its African-American citizens who have contributed to the growth and development of our community, and whereas these citizens look forward to new opportunities and challenges exhibiting an appreciation of the community and by rendering their time and talent for the betterment of Newman, and whereas the effort to build a community that lives up to democratic ideals and observance of African-American history brings attention to the continuing need to overcome prejudices and teach tolerance. And whereas the Newman, the city of Newman reflects a community of diverse cultures, ensuring the pursuit of equal opportunity and equal justice and providing a basis for better understanding and cooperation among our citizens, and whereas the month of February has been established by the national tradition as Black History Month, and the city of Newman wishes to join its African-American citizenry in commemoration of this month.
Now, therefore, I, John Fantasy, Mayor of Newman, proclaim the month of February 2006 as Black History Month in the city of Newman. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. Are you guys gonna save me some cookies? Save some cookies?
You may be excused to go have cookies and punch. Bagels, right? Bagels.
Save some cookies.
Thank you, nice meeting you.
Congratulations, young man.
Yeah, sure, Johnny. Don't eat all the cookies. Okay, moving on, items from the public, non-agenda items. If anybody has anything that is not on tonight's posted agenda, now would be the time to step forward.
Your honor, council members, all my fellow citizens, my name is Antonio Soria. I live at 526 Waxwing Court, and I work for the city of Newman Police Department. I have been a resident for fifteen years, and five years ago, I started having, I had mistletoe growing in my front yard, in the tree in the front. So I just happened to mention it, and somebody said, "Don't go touch it, it's a city tree, you're gonna get fined," so I left it. They said, "We suggest that you put in a work order to have it taken out." So I did. Took them a while, but they finally got it, and then the following year, the same thing hap, no, a year passed, and the same thing happened again, so then I called again, and took them another long while, and they came and took it out. Well, the following year, I had it again, and I put in a work order, never heard anything. I don't know if I saw Doug or somebody in the street, and I mentioned it. They said, "Oh, yeah, we'll get to it." The year passed, nothing happened, and then another year passed, and nothing happened. And then the other day, I got this letter that all of a sudden, I have inherited a tree. The tree is now mine, and I am responsible to take care of it, get the mistletoe out of it. Needless to say, I was really surprised because I was never notified in any way that the tree now belonged to me, other than getting this letter. And it says that if I don't take care of it, don't take care of the mistletoe problem, the city will send somebody out to take care of it, and that they will bill me on my taxes the following year. So I'm caught with this dilemma where I was never notified formally that the tree was mine. I found out that two years ago, the city had placed an ad in the paper stating the fact that now the trees belong to the citizens in that area. So I thought, "Well, I don't get the paper," or I didn't get the paper at that time, so I was not aware of it. So now I just, I'm caught with this, I'm a single woman, I don't know what to do. Somebody said, "Spray the tree." I don't know if that's gonna be to the likings of the city council or the city itself, so I really don't know what to do. I would like some suggestions or some input on this. Thank you.
Michael, would you like to explain that? And also, do we know how many on this list fall into that category?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, let's get that study. As you, as the council is aware, we went through this process probably about a year ago when we looked at the trees to see which ones actually belonged to the city and which ones are actually on private property and belong to the property owner. We had extensive meetings, probably two or three, to discuss that, and it was finally decided that the three trees are the ones that are in between the sidewalks and the streets, and that exist within the public right-of-way. The trees that exist behind the sidewalk and on private property are private property and the responsibility of the property owners. So because there was a, I would imagine, a period of time that precedes me, where the city was doing the trimming of those trees and the maintenance of those trees, certain, those property owners tended to believe that those were city trees, and so there's probably just a little bit of confusion and a little educational period that's gonna take place to where those property owners now become aware that those are their trees to maintain.
Ernie, do you know how many of, on this list fall into that category? Hate to put you on the spot, but since we just got this list this evening.
I didn't actually go out and take a look at these. This were done through the public work superintendent and the office assistant, but just looking at the balsam, waxwing, all that goldenrod, sumac, morgans, those are mostly in the, in the new subdivisions, oakwood subdivision, and I believe that they could be in the front yard, some of them, but not too many of them. I think that a lot of them are in the, in their backyards or their own private trees. I do know that most, most of that area was planted with raywood ash, and raywood ash does tend to get some, but it's not really that common. As you'll look on, further on down the list, you'll see that, you know, you list Amy Drive, eucalyptus, Main Street, Fig Lane, S Street, pine, Mercedes.
Older parts of town, yeah.
All of those, those I can assure you that they are on the private property because those are eighty-foot right-of-way streets. But I would say up to the, the first top, the first eight on the list, I would say could possibly be the trees that are planted in the PUE in the front, and as Michael explained, there could be some confusion because at one time, the city was maintaining them until about two years ago.
Okay, I think that clarifies a little bit for now. I think when we get to this on the agenda, then we'll address it a little more. Thank you, Ernie.
That's good.
Is there any other non-agenda items? Seeing non-agenda items, when that comes to force, if you'd like to comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and try to keep your comments under three minutes. Public hearings. The first one is a conduct public hearing, consider adoption of Resolution Number 2006 next to number, a resolution of the city council upholding the planning commission's action to deny variance number 05-03.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, what we have before us is an appeal by the applicant of the planning commission's decision to deny his variance request. This meeting transpired in, last month, was in January of 2006. The council, the planning commission held a public hearing, allowed all the neighbors to speak in opposition of or in support to, and there was a number of people that did speak in support of the structure. You have a number of letters that were attached to your report in support of the project by the neighbors. When the count, when the planning commission went through this variance request, they have very specific items that they have to look at in terms of, they have to look at the size, shape, and topography of the property, and they have to look at, are there extenuating or unusual circumstances relating to the size, shape, or topography of the property that necessitate, that require this structure to be put in that place? So their scope is very limited, as opposed to the council who, you know, has a little bit more latitude. There, they're solely to interpret that code section. So with that, after they went through their process and went through each finding one by one, they could not make the required findings to support the application. So they voted 3-0 to deny the application. Subsequent to that meeting, I talked to Mr. Belon, my neighbor, and let him know that there was another process that he could forward this request to the council. We do have some photos, I believe. Bring those up. This is, this is the structure, it's already built. These are the two neighboring properties, basically, the center post is the property line there. Go ahead and go to the next one, please. And this is from a street view here, as you can see, it's on the south side of the property line there. There's some double gates in there for access in there. Mr. Belon will speak further as to his need on there, but what he has indicated in the prior public hearing was, there's a member of his family that has some medical conditions that require a steady temperature range in his household, and that by putting this structure here, that helps to maintain a steady temperature throughout the year on there as well. Also, he needed to do some work on that sideline. As you know, the south-facing elevations tend to get a lot of heat there as well, so I think he'll further expand on that. And then here's the structure itself, as, kinda coming from the south a little bit, you can see the length of it is almost transient, the whole property there. And then there's the last structure itself there. When you look at the structure, and if you've gone out to look at it, it's a high-quality structure, it uses solid materials, and it's not chintzy, I guess is the lack of a better word, it's not a, it's a very quality structure that he did put up there, so that's one of the things I think that he has, why he has gained the support of his neighbors, you know, because they see it as an enhancement and not detrimental to their enjoyment of their neighborhood, so. So with that, I can answer any questions that you may have. We have attached all the letters that did come in from the neighboring properties. We did attach a copy of the planning commission report and the planning commission minutes to you, so with that, I can answer any questions that you may have. This, again, is a public hearing that has been noticed properly in accordance with the Newman Municipal Code.
Quick question. You said it was 3-0. I know that we've had a resignation with Mr. Ed for, then there was one planning commissioner that was absent at that meeting?
There's actually two absent. Commissioner Atwood has been going, undergoing some serious medical needs.
Treatments.
Treatments, yeah. And Ms. Deborah Allen was absent due to sickness as well.
With that, if the staff report's done for now, we're gonna open the public hearing, and if anybody from the council have any questions for Michael at this time, or we'd like to hear from the property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hello, council members. I think it was last month that I had that building put up, and as the letters indicated, I would like to just reemphasize once again that the structure was put there primarily because of shade requirements. The heating and air conditioning bill, primarily heating in the summer, is tremendous at my house, and I've gone through two air conditioners. Two days ago, I discovered that the third air conditioner is already gone, so I'll have to buy a better quality one this time. And the structure does provide a significant percentage of heat reduction in the short period of time that, that we had it there while the heat was up a little bit last month or the month before, it was far more enjoyable. Additionally, I had considered putting a shed in the backyard to store some of my household and gardening materials, but the shed would interfere with the, with the motif of the backyard, really, and it'd still be out there in the heat, things would still get hot. So I decided that that was the better of, better of two evils, to actually have a large shade cover, which significantly covers the side of the house. And now, through local word of mouth, I believe, I was told that if the shade cover is not attached, that I don't need a permit for it. But now, I find that perhaps I do, and I already intimated to Mr. Holland that that's not a problem, we can do that. But the city did come out and put a stop work on the, on the structure, at which point I ceased all construction, and it just has stood there. And although the required bracing is not on there yet, which are actually large corbels, four-by-four corbels, the structure is still fine, it's not falling down, and now I'm just waiting on the decision of the council as to what to do. I would, I would urge the council to examine some of these letters. My next-door neighbor, Mr. Alcántara, has also written a letter just the other day indicating that he is willing to, I think I have here, excuse me, that he is willing to, he understands that it is a zero clearance, and that I did consult him before building the structure, and also that he, should he sell his house, that he will disclose that he endorsed the construction of a zero clearance structure. I have also a signature list of, I don't know how many, maybe eighteen, nineteen neighbors who have signed indicating or agreeing that it is not a nice thought to them, it is not a problem to them, and on the contrary, that actually enhances the neighborhood because of the quality of the structure. So with that, I would urge the council to consider it, and hopefully to allow this. Should that happen, I am quite willing to go ahead and pay the necessary permits and fees that are necessary, which I was not aware of at the time, but that is okay with me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions?
Mr. Belon, if I may, sir. Just reviewing your letter, it says here that your wife has a medical condition. This structure here covers your air conditioning unit, is that what I'm understanding?
No, what the structure actually do, does, the south side of the house gets a large heat load and adds to the air conditioning billing. Plus, there's an office that my wife uses all the time on that side of the house, so that particular part of the house, unfortunately, is not very well aired or conditioned.
Okay.
And she, it all started by her asking for at least an awning on that side of the house, and that's how it began.
Are there windows there, then, that this is providing shade for? I'm just trying to understand what they're...
No, there are, there are, one, two, three, there are three large windows on the lower floor of that house, and so heat does go even through those windows to the, to the lower floor of the house.
Okay, and so that provides shades to those windows?
Oh, yes.
I'm trying to figure out what the structure is actually blocking on that side at all.
Yes, that's, that's structure, unfortunately, we don't have the, the plan of the house yet. That structure shades the lower section of the south side of the house, essentially virtually all of it, with the exception of the garage.
Okay.
It shades the entire side, lower-floor level structure.
And it's not attached to your home there on the south side?
No, I went to great pains to have it not attached. We use six-by-six beams, there are one, two, three, four on that side because of the, because of the, kind of a dark edging of the house for the chimney, so four six-by-six beams were required to be put there. And then there are six-by-14 beams that are, that are attached along the top section, but not touching the wall, so the structure is freestanding. And normally, we would use three poles, but we ended up using four because of the chimney.
Okay, thank you. Further questions?
I had an opportunity to go over and take a look at the structure. It is very, very well constructed, probably over-construted, and one of the concerns that I had was what the neighbors thought about it, particularly the neighbor that would be to his south side, that if, in fact, he was to sell his home, would the next people buying it have a problem with this structure? And in this letter, he says that he will disclose that he was in favor of putting it there. I see absolutely nothing wrong with the structure, and my way of thinking is I would grant the variance.
I agree with Mike. I also went over Frank's house last night, looked at it. I mean, you could land a 747 on the roof of that thing, it's so stout. I guess what bothers me more is, in one of his letters, he says, "Just in his neighborhood, there is many structures that are just like this, are out of compliance." So I don't see how we can, at this time, come to a finding without getting our code enforcement in line and on track, which I know we've been working on, and come up with a plan.
One additional question, Michael. In a freestanding structure, does he need a permit to build that, or if it's not attached to the house, what is the actual...
That freestanding structure itself would require a permit, yes.
Okay, so any construction requires a permit?
Well, I'm not gonna say that any construction, but I'm saying that this particular structure right here would, there could be some portions of the building code that I'm not accustomed to, that would give them exemption, but this type of structure right here, yes, it does require a building permit.
Is it because of where it's located? Because if it were at the rear of the house, and it's not attached, and there are no setback, there are no setback violations, then a freestanding covered shed doesn't need a permit?
A structure of this size, whether it's in the front, side, or wherever, would require a building permit.
So it's a square footage condition?
That's, that's one of the major characteristics of these structures, is types of materials. You know, if you're just putting a lattice, you know, there's a big difference between having this roof here, you know, that has comp shingle up on top to protect it, and that puts, that puts a load on the roof itself, and you're putting people under it. You know, that's, that's quite a different structure than by putting a piece of lattice over, you know, some four-by-four beams, so, you know, there's, there's different types of structures, and I would hate to just come out and say yes or no, because, you know, we would have to take them on an individual basis. But this structure and any structure that...
Because if it were at the rear of the house, and it's not attached, and there are no setback, there are no setback violations, then a freestanding cover shed doesn't need a permit?
A structure of this size, whether it's in the front, side, or wherever, would require a building permit.
So it's a square footage condition?
That's one of the major characteristics of these structures, is types of materials. You know, if you're just putting a lattice, you know, there's a big difference between having this roof here, you know, that has comp shingle up on top to protect it, and that puts a load on the roof itself, and you're putting people under it. You know, that's quite a different structure than by putting a piece of lattice over, you know, some four by four beams, so, you know, there's different types of structures, and I would hate to just come out and say yes or no, because, you know, we would have to take them on an individual basis. But this structure, and any structure that of this size and character, would require a building permit, yes.
One of the other things that I saw out there, and I saw in several other places, is next door, there's a storage shed, and there's a zero tolerance on that storage shed, it's right up next to the fence. So, you know, what would keep them from putting the storage shed in there, right up next to the fence, or enclosing that and saying, "It's a storage shed"?
Yeah, I think probably some of your fellow, yeah. Some of your fellow council members could talk about shedgate.
Those were standing room only meetings.
Well, that gets back to what the mayor was saying, so that's part of my reason why I'm in agreement with granting the variance.
And your walk around the neighborhood as well, taking the points that you bring up.
Councilman, you give me an idea, I think I'll put walls on it, if you don't mind.
I'd like to say, I'm not opposed to variance. The only thing I'm concerned about, how did we get to this point, you know, and I think that we have to be very careful in what's going on in our city, that we're not consistent as far as the way we're handling these backyard projects, because I haven't had an opportunity to see it, but it looks like it's well constructed and everything. So it's just my concern that we have to do a better job, as far as the city is concerned, making sure that people have permits, and know that they need permits before they build something like this.
I think you're right about, it's all about education. Charles?
Well, just in looking at this letter here, I, to be perfectly honest with you, I wasn't really as swayed by all these signatures and most of what was in this particular letter. The thing that, just for future reference, sir, the first part of what you were talking about was what was the main concern for me, your terminally ill-wife. You know, you come in here, you've given, your presentation is, I've heard you gave before the planning commission, and, you know, you seem to be very conscientious about what you're trying to do. It doesn't appear that you're trying to pull a fast one on the city, you're just trying to do what's in the best interest of your family, and, you know, to be perfectly honest with you, that's the only thing that I really look at in this, and, you know, I don't have a problem with moving forward and granting this solely based on that and nothing else. It sounds like an extenuating circumstance to me.
Mr. Councilman, if I might add, we continually have either heat or cool on, twenty-four hours a day.
Right.
So the bill's phenomenal, so anything that helps will be fine.
Right, and that's why I said, this is, to me, an extenuating circumstance. This whole issue with your wife, and this is something that you're trying to do that's in the best interest of your family. And having said that, that's why I don't have a problem with going forward with, you know, the others on this council.
Is there any other further comments?
I just thought I might add, 'cause I alluded to that, I'm not in the habit of overturning planning commission decisions, or they don't come before us that often where they require review, but one of the things I did look at in this in particular was, well, what is the spirit of the law when it comes to the intent here of the letter of the law? We could be as strict as we want to, but it wouldn't really get the things that we need to get done, and so compassion is one of the things I think that we use in our decision-making process. And one of the things I opened this meeting up was, within prayer, that we make some of the, sort of, the right decisions. So I'm counterbalancing that to state, I have a great deal of respect for the work that our planning commission does. I think they may have viewed this more in a stricter fashion than I'm viewing it, and I'm hearing my colleagues view it, so I'm ready for what action lays ahead.
If there's no further comments, then I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for some direction from the council.
I don't know if the language is right, but I move we allow a variance on item number zero five zero three. Is that correct, Mike?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
May I just add a comment? Who is the lady that complained about the tree?
Yes, she's...
Is she here?
She's eating donut, she's eating, I'm not doing something, sorry. Cookies and punch, bagel.
Could I meet her? In the spirit of this evening, I would like to volunteer to pay for her tree removal.
Wow, that's fabulous, thank you.
I think that the chief of police may be able to direct you to her location.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, go back one or two slides, if you would, please. Right there, oh, go ahead, one. One of the things also I liked, and one of the things we've talked about, is getting the trash containers out of sight of the public eye, and this is one of the things that caught my eye, and I thought was very attractive, very well done, very accessible for the people, and just point that out.
I agree.
Sure.
It's very nice.
Actually, Mr. Alcántara, my next door neighbor, this is the gentleman here, it was his idea, not mine, but this is a fence, and then four, five feet from the fence, there's a little mini fence right around here, where you can kind of picky those things behind it, and actually, there are four garbage cans in there, my two, the reclaiming garbage can, and the regular trash, and they just sit there, so it's very convenient to simply go out in the street and bring it behind there, and at a car level from the street, you can't see it.
Looks very good.
The other thing it does, too, it shows a spirit of cooperation between two neighbors and a spirit of community, so just wanted to point it out. Chief, take a picture of that, spread it around.
I knew that was coming.
When you're putting together your code enforcement report, Chief, make a note of that. Thank you, Mike. We have one other public hearing item this evening, it's adopt resolution number two thousand and six, next to number declaring the existence of a public nuisance under ordinance number two eighty-one, which is mistletoe abatement.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is an abatement issue, but first, a little bit about mistletoe. Broadly, mistletoe is an evergreen parasitic plant that grows in a number of landscape tree species in California. It has green stems, has thick leaves, and they're nearly oval in shape. And these plants produce small sticky white berries if they are female, or they produce pollen if they are male. The berries are very attractive to the birds, the birds love eating these, they feed on them, they digest the pulp of the berries, and then the birds excrete the living seeds that stick tightly to any branch on which it happens to land, creating new infestations. So it's important to remove mistletoe before it produces this seed and spreads to other limbs and to other trees. Mechanical control through pruning is the most effective method for the removal of these infected branches. Mistletoe, since it's in the tree, cannot be completely eradicated, but it can be controlled. So what we do is, we've sent, we've sent abatement notices for property maintenance to several properties. I think we've sent out about fifty letters, of whom, which we've only got twenty-six left. The letter also tells, informs the property owner of all the abatement, nuisance abatement procedures, and their option and their right to object at the public hearing. They, we did a final compliance today to take a look at these, and this was a list of properties that had not complied with the abatement notice. So staff recommendation is that you adopt a resolution number two thousand and six, next to number declaring the existence of a public nuisance under ordinance number two eighty-one. Any questions you may have?
I'm gonna open the public hearing. I think Councilman McCrane is allergic to mistletoe, sneezing, but, go ahead.
Ernie, I've got a question.
Sure.
When you cut the mistletoe out, I realize it's in the tree, how long does it stay out before you have to come back and cut it out again?
Generally, what the, and these are some of the articles that I've read through Ed Perry and the Davis University, and their recommendation is that you need to cut about a foot below of where the infested branch is, but, so that you can keep it from coming back. However, a lot of times, it's on the trunk of the tree itself. There, since you cannot, you don't want to lose your entire tree, so what you need to do is you gotta scrape the bark, cut off, cut those twigs that are growing off of there, and then wrap them with plastic, so that the sundae can't get to them and it can't come back. But it's a never-ending fight, we've been doing this for a number of years, but luckily, we've been able to keep it under control. I've noticed other cities, if you've looked around, some of their trees look like evergreens because they've just been let go for so long, and so eventually, if you don't eradicate it, it'll eventually kill the tree and you end up losing it. Some of the most susceptible trees to mistletoe are the modesto ash, which we don't plant anymore, but it also grows on other species of trees.
Ernie, one question.
Yes.
How successful have we been to lower the incident mistletoe in the trees? Are we winning the war or losing the war, or is it just...
Well, we're just trying to keep up with it. There are years when it really comes back with a vengeance, and you have it spread throughout, all over the place, and then there are times when you still have some out there, but it's not as severe, so we just try to stay with it. The other thing I wanted to point out is, we do have a lot of street city trees that do have mistletoe, that our crews have to get to, but at the present time, we're putting all our efforts into the pruning of the Bradford pear in the downtown area, but we will be eradicating our own mistletoe. So just because you adopt this ordinance, doesn't mean that we're gonna take action against these people until we have our own house in order.
And these first eight, though, that we were talking about before?
Pardon?
These are the first eight, we were talking about the first eight.
Well, I'm not, I, what I, when I mentioned the first eight, I said that these may be the people who are confused as whether the tree belongs to them or not, and I'm not sure if the first, all the eight properties have mistletoe on them. It could only be a couple of them. But all the rest of them are on their own private property.
Right. And either way, though, on the first eight, we'll work with those folks, maybe, even if it means giving them a little bit more time?
Yes.
Or something, because that's kind of a gray area.
Yes, we do.
Those opposed to the others.
We contact all the property owners, we let them know what action was taken, and then what we do is, we tell them that if they want, the city will hire a contractor to come here and do all the trees at once, because if they do it individually, they really have to, they have to pay for the travel time, they have to pay, even if it's just a branch or two. This way, what we do is, we pool all their resources together, and we bring in a tree man, and he gets all the properties all at once, and then we build through the city according to how much time and effort was put in each property.
Given the time and effort, Ernie, abatement notices for property maintenance were sent to several property owners, according to our ordinance. When did we do that? I'm sorry.
It's, the notices were mailed out on the first of February.
First of February.
On the very bottom, yeah, because we do need to give them a ten-day notice, so that they'll know that a public hearing is coming up, but again, we'll work with them, and we'll give them additional time if they want to do it on their own.
What I'd like to see, since, as you mentioned, looking at this list again, looks like the first eight, as you said, are in a newer part of town, sounds like we have a communication problem when one of our city employees doesn't even understand, you know, what the new procedures are with the trees. So what I'd like to see is us take care of these eight ourselves, and then we need to come up with a letter once and for all, even if we have to include that in our water sewer bills or whatever, to explain to the people in these parts of town that they are responsible for the trees. But it's pretty sad when a city employee doesn't even understand.
No, the city employees understand. They were very happy when you adopted, and you said that we weren't, had to be responsible with those trees and those public utility easement areas. They're really happy because they know that we're really loaded, our workload was tremendous.
No, what I mean is, an employee that worked for the city, that owns, that all of a sudden we were taking care of a tree, and she is...
Oh, I thought you meant the public works employees.
No, 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 no.
No, okay.
No, a city employee, that, you know, she didn't even know she was responsible for the tree. I think that's our miscommunication.
Okay.
So that's why I like to see that.
A couple of concerns I have, Ernie.
Sure.
A lot of these, not a lot, there's several of these names I recognize, and they're senior citizens.
Mm-hmm.
What is it gonna cost them to, and I realize it's an arbitrary figure, depending on how much mistletoe's in those trees, what's it gonna cost them to get that cleaned up? And in some cases, maybe they can't afford it.
I think what they've done in the past is, the tree expert has been able to eradicate all the mistletoe in one day, so mostly what they get is anywhere from, I don't know, fifteen minutes, half an hour, somewhere only ten minutes, but there's some that do take longer, but I think that what they've done is, I'm not sure, because I'm not in City Hall, but I think they've made arrangements to make payments for the work that was done there, so...
So you don't know what the, off the top of your head, what the average bill would be, I mean, for...
No, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you.
From the past, though, you don't remember what something like that costs, Ernie? What paid last year is what it was?
No, I don't, I'd be making certain of it if I told you I do.
So the ones that we take care of, they're attached to their sewer and water bill, obviously. I mean, is that what we're doing?
Property tax.
Property, I mean, do we bill them separately for that, or then obviously, as you said, if they don't pay it, then it goes on the property tax?
Right, they're billed separately for that.
Okay.
They're billed separately. I think Michael has something.
There's just one case that we're aware of, where the person was allowed to make payments, and it was like twenty-seven dollars a month, or something like that, probably for over a year period, so. I don't know how much she had in her tree, so, you know, it's hard to, you know, it's hard to judge, some may have more than others, but we're just trying to say that on that particular case, that's what the amount was.
Okay, any other further comments before I close the public hearing? Another guy allergic to mistletoe. Can I close the public hearing and ask for some direction?
I saw a move for adoption, resolution number two thousand and six, next number, a resolution declaring the existence of a public nuisance under ordinance number two eight one of the City of Newman, abatement of mistletoe.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We have three ayes and two noes.
Yeah.
And just for clarification on that as well, I believe I heard consensus on the first eight, what the mayor talked about us pressing forward on those folks.
That's why I voted no, because I wanted us to...
Was that part of your motion? Because I didn't hear that. That we pulled the eight. I thought it was over the whole list.
That wasn't the motion.
We can reconsider.
Okay, then let me reconsider it, since I was in the...
We can reconsider it.
If I can reconsider it, since I was in the positive.
Sure, I don't mind.
My motion is that we, I read the motion. Adopt resolution number two thousand and six, declaring the existence of a public nuisance under ordinance number two ninety, two eighty-one. We specifically exclude for payment the first eight residents on the attached mistletoe abatement list.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll still second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes by the zero, thank you. Moving on, consent calendar, I'd may approval of warrants, I'd be approval minutes of the January twenty-four, two thousand and six regular meeting.
On the warrants, if I could pull zero two nine nine hundred to precision inspection, their rental income at twelve twenty Main Street, of mine.
So noted, do we have some...
I would also like to pull a warrant, please, zero two nine eight three two.
Zero two nine eight three two to Mark Crinklaw.
Could we, uh, have a motion with those two items off then?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. And for warrant, O two nine eight three two and O two nine nine zero zero.
Uh, so moved, ma'am.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes three to zero with two not participating. Regular business. Item A, presentation request for letter of support, two one one Stanislaus Helpline Project. Mayor, tonight we have, um, Ms. Liz Berg, I believe is your, is that correct?
I'm, hi, I'm Liz Gimble with the United Way of Stanislaus.
Liz Gimble, okay. I have it wrong though. From the United Way, who's going to present, uh, a two and one program that is looking to get adopted on a county-wide basis.
Yes. Good evening, council. As I mentioned, I'm Liz Gimble and Linda Avadon is with me from the United Way of Stanislaus. And the purpose of this presentation is to introduce you to what two one one is with the intent to request a letter of support of two one one Stanislaus Helpline. The reason we need the support is as we apply for the California Public Utilities, the CPUC, they, they, they say that we need to have a strong community support of the project in order to move forward. So let me go ahead and see if we can, um, get the, uh, presentation up and if not, we'll go without it. And, um, we'll tell you about the two one one. Okay, go ahead and... So what is two one one? Two one one is a free accessible, three-digit phone telephone number that will enable the people of Stanislaus County access to appropriate health and human services. What it is, is like nine one one is to emergency services, two one one is to non-emergency information and referral. I might also call it INR throughout this presentation. Right now, a thousand times a year, a lot of people call, very myriad of numbers. They never know what number to call or what agency is going to help them or maybe it doesn't serve the area that they're in. And with two one one, it'll direct it as a funnel into one phone call and then we distribute the phone, uh, information to the appropriate agencies. Now, the primary goal of Stanislaus two one one is at all times, I have to read this one. At all times every day of the year, the people of Stanislaus County will have access to timely and appropriate health and human services, information and referral to help them make informed decisions about issues which affect their quality of life. Now, secondary goal of two one one Stanislaus Helpline is to disseminate, (laugh) to disseminate the vital information that might be crucial in, in the event of hazards or disasters affecting the City of Newman or Stanislaus County, or for that matter, our larger picture. Now, our mission is to provide the people of Stanislaus County with timely and appropriate health and human services, information and referrals. And (laugh), now, the public benefits from having a two one one. By having one number access for quality referrals, which is free and confidential to the user. And there'll be expanded coverage within the county. And, uh, two one one has been proven to reduce misdirected phone calls. And, uh, two one one is going to be multilingual and available twenty-four hours a day. And it should improve human services, and I think there's one more. And as well as give updated public information. Now, two one one has also been used in other counties and states as code enforcement numbers and things like that as well. Now, program agencies benefit from two one one by having single comprehensive resource as well as the specialized information referrals, the INR, can focus on their specialties. For instance, maybe the aging, would have more time to spend on the aging than to have spending on, um, comprehensive referrals. Now, two one one is deemed to be cost effective by a study by the University of Texas, which states a national two one one system would have a net, uh, value to society of a hundred and thirty million the first year alone, approaching about one point one billion over the course of ten years. Let's take a look at where two one one is in the United States. Uh, currently, two one one is available in thirty-two states, excuse me, yeah, thirty-two states with a hundred and seventy-one active two one one centers with over forty-six percent of the population having access. On the map, the, uh, states in red are full state implementations. The states in blue show that there are some two one one centers. And the states in green are showing planning. Most of this has come from the West Coast over, so we're just now starting to see more here. Calling for two one one act is a bipartisan act that is currently on the, in, active in the House and the Senate. And approval of this act would provide a hundred and fifty million dollars, um, matching grants to the two one ones nationally. And that would leave about maybe an estimate of thirty thousand to Stanislaus County if this goes through. The California Public Utilities Commission states a live specialist must answer the phone twenty-four seven three sixty-five every single day and every minute of the year. The service must be free to callers regardless of demographics and language barriers. Now, the CPUC says we must have local support for the two one one service, and that's why we're here today. And we will, they will not allow a tariff in order to support the project. Now, California, two one one day last year was the first day that California saw two one one, which is Ventura County, and then after that, Los Angeles, Orange, Riverside, San Diego, and Santa Barbara Counties followed suit. San Francisco County is due to launch March twenty-ninth. As well as most of the Bay Area and Sacramento are looking at a sometime in two thousand and six. No dates have been set exactly. Now, the existing Stanislaus information and referral is, there's two generalized information referrals, United Way of Stanislaus being one of them, the five seven two call. And, uh, most of, and we've been doing information referrals since nineteen ninety-four. And with two one one, it'll make it easier to, uh, gain the clients to use the service. Our local call projections for, uh, launch target date is July two thousand and seven for Stanislaus. And starting in two thousand and seven, we'd be looking at about thirteen thousand calls on up to twenty-five thousand in the course of the first five years. And the calls are based on about a four point five percent of the population's growth. And that also does account for the growth as well as additional marketing. Now, our call center details, we plan to have the, um, calls answered live at the, uh, United Way of Stanislaus on McHenry in Modesto at, from seven PM, or six, excuse me, seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday. And in the after hours, weekends and holidays to be covered by another two one one call center. Our rollout plan, as I mentioned, we are looking at a, uh, July date of two thousand and seven. In the process, we are trying to seek the community support. Uh, we've done some small grants to get some of the grant, uh, technology in place for the database. And, uh, hopefully this spring, we'll be looking at purchasing a new database. And by next winter, getting a new telephone system and the other techno, technology support in place so that we can launch in July of 'oh seven. The marketing tagline, two one one Stanislaus Helpline. Your first call for community resources anytime, any day. And, uh, there's a Spanish translation up there as well. I'm not going to read it for you, but if you'd like to, you can. Marketing plan, um, we have a target market of, of the social, low, excuse me, to target the lower socioeconomic population as well as those who work with the groups above and the general public, public as well. Go back one. The annual budget projections for the two one one Stanislaus Helpline is between two hundred and seventy-five and three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars per year. With, um, our existing funding sources that we know of, and we have not yet advocated funding, but, uh, that puts us at a net funding of two seventy-five to three seventy-four. And I think I gave you the numbers wrong, I'm sorry. The cost of the service, let's start over with that. The cost of the service is between three seventy-five and four hundred and nineteen thousand. With our existing funds that we know of, forty-five to a hundred thousand, and a net funding needed of the figure I gave you first, two hundred and seventy-five to three seventy-four.
I have a question if I may interject.
Sure.
You, you used the word tariff earlier and I, I interpret that as you can't gain funding sources from tax.
That's correct, we can't-
Which is the same word as-
Well, we can't, we can't, the CPUC will not be able to add, like, nine one one had a tax added on the telephone bill. We cannot do that, at least for seven years.
That's been discussed quite a bit in, uh, a committee that I've served on, uh, statewide. But my question is also, United, uh, Way handling the two one one system is what I'm understanding. Is that what's been structured nationally? Or is that just in Stanislaus County in particular?
Well, United Way is one of the spearhead, um, agencies behind the two one one. However, it doesn't leave, it, uh, not all two one ones are operated by a United Way. So in this case, we've been doing the information referrals in this county for over ten years, so it just makes the most sense that we would keep it where we have it.
Right, you just incorporate it, okay.
Did that answer your question? Okay, go ahead, Linda. Okay, our potential funding sources are, you know, healthcare and technology grants, business community donations, calling for two one one act, as I mentioned. The Children's and Families Commission, who has also paid, uh, our initial grant for my salary to get this planned. And, uh, the local United Way, foundations, government grants and other mental health acts. Now, I also would like to thank the people that have helped my committee and helped me in the planning and that's been the, uh, various employees of the United Way of Stanislaus, as well as the depart, or DRAIL, the Disability Resource, Children's and Families Commission of Stanislaus, um, many county departments, including Office of Education, Office of Emergency Services, Department of Employment Training, the library system and some others, Havens Women's Center, Modesto B, Modesto Junior College and the American Red Cross locally. Now, if you'd like to have more information about, uh, the two one one Stanislaus Helpline, we do have a link on our website, theuwaystand.org. Our full seventy-something biz, page business plan can be found on that. Nationally, twooneone.org can give you some more information as to where to go nationally. Cares, C-A-I-R-S dot org for California. And lastly, for our database that we're currently using for our information referrals, CVIR, Central Valley Information Referral dot org. Well, with the positive, (laugh) with the projected positive outcomes, two one one Stanislaus Helpline will improve the overall quality living of Stanislaus County. And in your packet, what I'd like to also note that I did give you some statistics as to the calls that we received last year from the City of Newman, as well as how they compare on the backside of the form to the Stanislaus County. And I would just like to note that out of, we, Newman did not have as many, they had fourteen calls last year, but out of the fourteen, eleven of them were from households of less than twenty thousand. Many of them were female, had a household, many of them were disabled, and many of them had, um, families of, of over four. So you can see that this can help you identify certain services that may be gaps in services and, and other needs. So with that all being said, I was wondering if there's any questions or comments that I can, uh, address at this point.
Question? I'm sure the council would concur that this is a great program and everybody concur for a letter of support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I could ask that, I may have the letter preferably before the end of the month. That would be preferred and so I can get everything sent in with the application. And I did bring a sample letter to leave tonight. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you tonight.
Thank you, leave that with Michael and we'll take care of that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item B, introduce an adopt ordinance number two thousand and six dash one, an urgency ordinance of the city council, an interim ordinance prohibiting the establishment of medical dispensaries in the City of Newman for the period of forty-five days. Persuade into California government's code session six five eight five eight.
Evening, city count, uh, mayor and city council. Um, I think it was about, about four months ago that I had, uh, Councilman Parker bring up the fact that we, we might want to start looking at something in regards to, uh, medical marijuana and taking a stand. And, um, um, what I was looking at is what's, what's being done currently in other, other jurisdictions. And what I was looking at is that basically, most of the jurisdictions around us have, have got this, uh, either a moratorium or have already prohibited near jurisdictions. And, um, I think it's, uh, the problem is, is that we're, we're also looking at this fact that, uh, uh, we would be the, one of the only ones in Stanislaus County not. And we don't want to be a, a preferred site for these individuals. So we want to take a look at what's going on with the other cities at this point. Um, uh, the City of Modesto, as I said, has, has got a, a prohibition, uh, along with the cities of Fresno, Rockland, um, Concord, Susanville and Pasadena. City of Turlock, um, has got a moratorium for forty-five days. What this does is gives a chance to kind of see what's going, going to be going on as far as lawsuits and things and, uh, court decisions, um, on their pending litigation that's going on against, uh, some of these other cities at this point. Um, this also can be extended up to, uh, ten months and twenty-two days, um, before we would have to, to, before this would, uh, couldn't, uh, would have to, to be, um, made into either, uh, we'd have to address it into a permanent ordinance at this point. So with the proposition two fifteen and SB four twenty, that's kind of what we're, there's kind of a, a disconnect. As I've said in our staff report, is basically, uh, California law and federal law kind of, um, collide with one another as far as what is, what is legal and what is not legal. And, um, in this interim, until we kind of get something, um, uh, resolved as far as legalities of this, I think this would be a prudent, uh, act for us to be able to, to put into place at this point.
Sounds pretty cut and dry to me. Any questions for the chief?
Give staff a ch, opportunity to be able to, to, um, to look at these different issues and to take a further, um, researches this further before we actually take a, a hard stand on this thing.
If I can interject it real quickly to, we, uh-
Sure.
-we've been talking about this in the Central Valley City Attorney Group. And it looks like Fresno might be the test case, uh, hopefully soon.
Hmm.
People challenging Fresno.
One of the reasons I, I brought this, uh, to the table was I had been, uh, serving on a public safety committee, uh, statewide last year, and a number of communities have been dealing with this. You, you're kind of well aware of it over in the Greater Bay Area, particularly in the Greater San Francisco area and the City of Oakland. But some of the smaller cities were starting to become impacted, uh, like San Leandro, Hayward, for instance. And all of a sudden, dispensaries were being located in their towns by gaining business permits. And then all of a sudden, the city, uh, becomes aware that this is actually a dispensary for, uh, medical marijuana use. And I thought we'd kind of head things off at the pass, and I'm glad to see this, uh, come to fruition in this format because it, it gives us time. And I like the fact that we can possibly extend this ten months and twenty-two days. Because if something were to come forward-
Mm-hmm.
-in our, in our town specifically, uh, we have a means to be able to deal with it now.
Yes, and there seems to be different, uh, avenues that these cities are taking. One is the, um, regulating where they're, if they are going to allow them where-
Where they're located.
-limiting where they can be, uh, or just an out and out moratorium against that. So, um, with that, um, I would be, intercede any kind of questions regarding this. I could bring up all the different, uh, legalities that are in here, but, um, I think you've had a chance to, to, to go through that. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to, to go through those with you.
Just for, uh, layman terms, chief, would you, would you kind of explain Prop two fifteen versus, uh, the federal law?
Well, basically, um, um, in California, what they've, what they've allowed for is, uh, under medical marijuana, uh, the opportunity for those that can get a doctor's prescription to be able to, um, grow, cultivate marijuana for personal use, uh, to fill the, like a prescription for themselves. They can also join together. It does not allow for the sale of marijuana. Um, and that's where the, the issue as far as some of these dispensaries, um, is that that's their, their businesses for sales. And, um, that kind of go against, go against the law. The federal, uh, statute actually prohibits possession of marijuana altogether. So, uh, there is kind of a, a disconnect, uh, a, a different force here between the federal and the state as far as the state kind of granting it more and, uh, and a complete prohibition by the, by the federal government for possession. So neither the, the federal government nor the California provides for sales of marijuana. And so, um, what this, that's pretty much, uh, two fifteen in the federal law in, in kind of a nutshell. So, um, that about cover it, uh, Councilman Parker?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further questions? Thank you, chief. Could we have some direction?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we introduce an adopt ordinance number two thousand one, next to number, an urgency ordinance of the city council, interim ordinance prohibiting the establishment of medical dispensaries in the City of Newman for a period of forty-five days. Pursued to the government court as noted.
Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Item C, adopt resolution number 2006, next to number, a resolution establishing guidelines for downtown historic plaques.
Thank you, Mayor. Several weeks ago, we had a request for a placard to be, or plaque to be put on a building in the downtown area. It was on the same building that you approved the mural to go on, which would be in between the south of Merced Street on the east side there. With that, staff believes it's prudent to make sure that we have standardized guidelines so we don't get a hodgepodge of different types of plaques that go out and are placed in our streetscape program. So, with that, we are bringing some guidelines before you to see if you concur with that or not. I'll just go over them briefly. Number one, plaques may be approved by the Architecture Review Committee if all the guidelines can be met. Architecture Review Committee may like to forward this matter to the City Council where they believe one or more of the guidelines are not in compliance with the adopted guidelines. The plaque shall commemorate a locally significant building, event, or natural feature that had a direct effect or influence on the community. Murals accurately depicting the historic scene or building may qualify for a plaque. The plaque may, the plaque shall accurately describe the historic significance of the building, event, or natural feature. The plaque shall be numbered sequentially to track their approval. The city shall be responsible for issuing to the number. Since the plaque is designed for historical purpose, the plaque shall not advertise or identify local businesses and/or persons. The plaque shall be constructed of bronze metal, and the plaque shall not exceed eight and a half feet by eleven inches in size. When I, on number five, when we talk about design for historical purpose, when we say don't, local businesses and individuals, we're talking in a non-historical sense. Obviously, if one of the plaques, you know, wanted to commemorate Simon Newman, obviously that's appropriate. That's what we were not alluding to at that point. So, anyway, this is a discussion item. We also put it in the opportunity for you to adopt in a resolution that would adopt these guidelines as policy, and we can go back and take another shot at it if we completely missed the mark. But you'll see other cities that have used these bronze plaques to enhance their downtown, to tell the story of their community. And that may be something that I think the city of Newman should look forward to as we try to encourage more and more tourists and people to come visit our downtown.
Was the Architecture Review Committee, they worked together on this, were they unanimous in this, all these points?
They didn't come up, during the discussion of the Architecture Review Committee, these are all the points that they expressed to me, and then I came up with these and prepared them for you without their direction.
But did they have a chance to look at the seven points or?
They did not.
So, you're saying it was based on their discussion?
It was based on their discussion, that's correct.
Right, so it covers, yeah, they're aware of all these.
I use their guidance in draws, drafting these guidelines.
I got a couple of dotations. The limitation inside eight point five by eleven, that's roughly what, like a sheet of paper?
That's correct.
Is there a reason why we're limited to that size?
Well, we just wanted to standardize it.
To keep it at one size?
To keep it at one size and to make sure that it is complementary to the building, but doesn't, you know, dictate and, you know, create this big scene here. But, you know, we think that eight and, or I thought that eight and a half by eleven would be an adequate size, that you could see it from the street, people will know it's there, and they can be able to read it.
How are we defining the historical aspect of it? Just within the downtown district?
Well, we thought, the perspective was, as we mentioned, it's a direct effect or influence on the whole community of it. So, it doesn't necessarily have to be just for the downtown area, you know, it could be, maybe an event happened, you know, somewhere in the community, but it can be immortalized at this particular location. In this particular case, the, what we are envisioning is putting the story of the building. As we, as you know, back in, I think it was around the late eighties, they did a historical inventory of our community, and they told lots of stories in that historical resources inventory that we did with the CDBG grant money, using some of those stories in these historical purposes there.
But I think what Tim's asking is, and I think he's looking at number two.
Yes.
Is just basically whose interpretation of that? I think that's what he's asking, more for, am I wrong? Are you asking more for interpretation or?
Well, yeah, I mean, what came to mind sort of was like the schoolhouse building that was redone, it's over by the library. It's just, I want to leave this a little more flexible than what I see. Under number one, I definitely would add that the applicant can have an appeal process. For instance, if it went before the Architecture Review Committee, which I would prefer this to be done at that level, but there should be an appeal process, given the fact that I just think it should have a little bit of flexibility. I don't mind uniformity, but I'm almost kind of imagining this eight point five by eleven maybe being in need of being a little more significant on other buildings. That's, I kind of, this might need to go back before I'll be ready for it to approve on adopting it, because I don't really think in this session I want to brainstorm these ideas.
Would you like?
Well, I was just deferring to my colleagues. I mean, I see what you've done here, but I think that it might need a little more flexing.
I agree, I think that's too small.
Okay.
Can you see that from out there?
He's saying that while he's wearing his glasses.
I can see it right here, but, no, I think we need to take another look at the whole thing.
Can we just table this and then refer back to staff?
Bigger sizes, if that's okay with everyone.
If I may ask, is, oh, are we looking at size being one of the main issues and that historical perspective? You'd like, the intent of number one was the council ultimately being part of the appeal process and being the governing body over Alaska. We can clarify that language. I'm just trying to, when I do some research with other communities, want to look at, make sure that I cover all your points that you would like to see clarified.
Well, I like number five, the plaque is designed for historical purposes. You know, I don't think it's going to take a overwhelming, but yeah, get some ideas for the size in particular, if there's any variances that cities may have, because I don't think, we're not a one-size-fits-all city, if I may say that. So, I would kind of like to see that particular aspect. I don't know what my colleagues might want to defer to, but that's one.
I think just in looking at the staff report here, it sounds like everybody's aboard most of it. There's just little, small things that maybe need to be ironed out a little bit. And as far as number one goes, you're right, that's just a matter of just clarification, because ultimately, anyway, we ultimately reserve the right to have something appealed to us anyway.
Yeah.
So, it's just a matter for clarifying the language. And I guess just number seven just maybe needs to be ironed out just a little bit, I guess.
Maybe take a poll on, when you talk to other cities, I know I've seen you before in other cities, but if I recall, I think they're a little better than that.
Or even the business community, and I suppose that would be a perfect segue into, Mr. Navoa, would you like to comment?
Thank you for that lead in. Bob Navoa, nine forty Fresno Street. In my business, we provide a plaque service, and I can tell you that the eight and a half by eleven generally is pretty average size. I'm not going to disagree with Councilman Parker. I think there are going to be opportunities out there when you may want something a little larger, but for the most part, if folks go out to buy a bronze plaque, they find the eleven, eight and a half by eleven to be very attractive, not only size-wise but financially, they can get very expensive. And, but I do agree that there should be some flexibility in that, that, again, not one shoe's going to fit everybody, but I think by and large, you'll find most folks going, oh, yeah, the eight and a half by eleven does look very attractive. That's all I have.
Have you done any, does anybody have anything around town?
Well, we did, yes, we did the one at the high school, for the bronze plaque for the stadium, which was quite large.
Okay.
It was that one, and I don't recall, no, it's much larger.
But I mean, have you done any this size?
That size, we've done some for out-of-town clients, but not anything, no one locally. There are some commercial ones available, I think there's one on the Mel's Building and one on the Stevens Building, and those are commercial ones, and they're perhaps a little bit longer and a little bit narrower, it's kind of hard to, but they're, again, they vary, and so if you lock everybody into eight and a half by eleven.
Get our tape measure out and take a poll there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is that explanatory then? Michael?
Yes.
I see the painter of the mural in the audience, Manuel, would like to comment?
Manuel Salazar, six oh eight Lady Slipper. Thank you very much for allowing me to paint in your lovely city, my lovely city. It's nice to be able to brighten up the city with murals and things like that, because as we found out, and I found out, people enjoy them. And to make it, I think we have some signs that are on the entrances to our cities and also in our city that say, "Historical Newman." It's good to put the placards, it's good to numerate them, possibly get a brochure that could state the locations of these, and probably a little blurb in there also to assist the placard. If you're going to put a placard up, it should mention the location, what was there, the building, the site, describe everything, a little historical thing, dates, things like that. Eight and a half by eleven is kind of small, you can't put too much on it. I think if they had a maximum and a minimum, then I think it allows that flexibility to be able to accomplish either a, how should I say, a wordy plaque and still limited, and yet a brief plaque with limits also, dates. And also, people who help erect things, who donate to things, are philanthropists, they love to sometimes give. Sometimes they're recognizing them on these placards are good things. It helps to show how your city backs things like this. A lot of people in the city here have donated for a lot of things, the theater, you see the Walk of Fame out there. There's all kinds of ways that people are, how should I say, recognized in history by their donations. This clock donated by, boom. This statue donated by, boom. You know, and these are good things, because it lets people know we have people who are in favor of supporting the arts, supporting historical rehabilitation or construction of, reconstruction of buildings, et cetera. So, I would say that these are good ideas that, you know, they've talked about, I was present at some of the things that were said at the Architectural Committee. They're all good things, but I think a little bit more massaging would probably do it. We're in a hurry to get a plaque up. We have public things that are ready to happen, television, newspaper, radio, et cetera, entertainment, just to present this plaque, this mural to the city. But we're willing to wait to see what the outcome of this plaque is. So, maybe send it back and let him massage it a little bit, if it helps. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Item eleven, I have some city manager and staff.
Thank you, Mayor. At our, at our previous, I believe it was the previous meeting, it may have been the one preceding that, there was a question by one of the council members, Councilmember Martina, with respect to a party that was held at the theater, I just wanted to provide further clarification on that. That originally had, the private party had contacted the city to see if they were going to host an event for the retiring employee. The original response was they did not have any plans, so the private party went forward. At that time, though, the city then reconsidered and took over the planning process, so that was actually a city-sponsored event where I originally stated that it was a private event. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
You're saying it was a city-sponsored event?
It was a city-sponsored retirement party for the retiring employee that was held at the theater. That's the way my due diligence has brought me to report to you. With that, in your, in your weekly report, I mentioned that I've been talking with the interim city manager with the city of Gustine about the possibility of having two-on-two meetings with the city of Gustine regarding a lot of the infrastructure situations that both communities are facing. I wanted to see if that was something that you wanted to consider. They will be looking at providing a surface water treatment plant to, for their residents of their community. It may be an opportunity that we could explore by sitting down with them and doing a, you know, some kind of joint powers agreement, and then a joint facility. When I talked to the interim city manager, it's really, we're just kind of talking, does it really make sense for both cities to build twenty-five million dollar surface water treatment plants when we're only five miles apart? With that, he indicated that he has an infrastructure subcommittee that can meet on Wednesdays and Thursdays around six thirty. So, if that interests you, we don't have to send them a letter now, I can just send them a formal, asking them if they'd like to meet together and get together, if there's two members that would like to sit down. With that, I would also mention that it might be appropriate for, to do a two-on-two meeting with council members and from the city of Patterson. Both of us are on the west side of the Stanislaus County. As you know, most of the press and things that go on tend to happen on the east side where the larger population bases are. They also are going to a treated surface water system over there as well. So, I thought it might be an opportune time to get the two cities together to see and explore the options of working together, and to try to gather support for the west side here. So, I'd like the council to consider those, and if so, just let me know, and I can send a letter over to each of those communities and see if they want to do something with that.
Sounds like a good idea. I'm talking, I've talked to a council member from Gustine, Joel Rivera, and we need to chat on these issues.
I'm in support of that, I like to see collaborative efforts. And just thinking in terms of what you were saying versus the east county and the west county, but just thinking about the county as a whole and thinking a little more regionally, we're all feeling the impacts of growth, and if we can, I think it's kind of like smart thinking, smart growth is something, these terms we throw out there, but if we're not talking to one another, then what you just mentioned, the twenty-five million dollars, you know, that amount of money, it could be something that could benefit our area in general, so I would certainly support that.
Anytime we can maximize economies of scale, then we should at least take a look at that. That's big money if we do it all separately.
Especially with Gustine, since, you know, we're in the same water district, that just might work.
Correct. And then if you've kept track in the Modesto B. within the last couple of days, you know, the county and the city of Patterson are looking at doing a joint adventure for surface water treatment for the Crow's Landing and for themselves as well, so they're going together and doing a joint water plan on that, so they're looking at that analysis. So, with that, then what I hear is I will forward letters to both of those communities and indicate our desire to work with them and to maybe have a sit-down and do a two-on-two with them.
I will volunteer to be on the committee to meet with Gustine, would somebody like to join me?
I'd be glad to.
Do those two dates, Wednesday and Thursday, do either of those dates?
You're welcome.
Okay, that's staying for you, Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, occasionally there's a meeting, you know, on a Wednesday or Thursday, but, you know, get some dates and we'll get the ball rolling.
Yeah, I will do that. With that, I'm going to pass out some draft letters. Been drafting some, been drafting letters to US Congressman Dennis Cardoza and Senators Boxer and Senators Feinstein, requesting that they continue the funding for the Oris Simba Creek project, and that they appropriate the adequate funds in accordance that United States Army Corps of Engineers asking, so that we can continue. so that we can continue to have that project moving forward. So. And these are just, this is the sample one that I'm gonna send to the, each of the senators. And then there'll be a separate letter that goes to Dennis Cardoza because he's a little bit more than a no. Also, I have written letters, uh, from, for the Chamber of Commerce and have met with their president and he's going to sign that letter for their support of the project. And then I will also be, um, touching bases with the Historic Society and asking them to sign a letter that I will write for them as well. Again, asking for their support, um, for these projects so that we can continue to get that funding to keep this project moving forward.
When are you making your trip, John?
Um, we leave on March fourteenth.
I think it would be appropriate, uh, to, since you're drafting the letters, that, uh, it be letterhead through the mayor. He's going back there to lobby our congressional leadership directly with the group from Stanislaus County. And I think it would be beneficial, uh, to have him, uh, leading on that letterhead because he's gonna be meeting with them personally. I know, uh, the previous visit that took place netted this county, uh, some significant funding sources, uh, for transportation in specific, but we're looking specific for our project, uh, as well. I think that would be...
And you're right, this, these letters will be attached to the report that we, that I hand deliver when I'm back there. Because stuff that's mailed takes six weeks to get there. So, by the time they, uh, eradicate it and inspect it and all that. So this will be, these letters will be hand delivered in the package that, working with the county staff, will be in the packet. So.
And then, uh, just lastly, I did, um, make contact with the Senator Feinstein's office and appropriations are due at the end of this month, the request. So if you have any projects that you would like us to send to, to either one of the senators, um, let me know. We'll make sure we include that in our appropriations request that we send forward to them. So. One of the things that we're looking at is obviously trying to complete our downtown revitalization project through the implementation of the Plaza, the street skate program. Um, so these are projects that we, you know, that we hold near and dear to our heart, that we think that will revitalize our local economy. So we're gonna, we're gonna try to put that on there as well. So, but if you have any additional projects, just let me know. We'll make sure we get those on there as well. So. So with that, that's all that I had. Is, um, maybe staff has some?
Couldn't go to a council meeting without saying something. Um, kinda let you know, we've talked about the reorganization of our department and, um, uh, we already, as you earlier have, we had the badge pinning for our new officer. We also have a new sergeant. Uh, Randy Richardson, um, was chosen to be our, our second sergeant. Um, he will, uh, take the reins on, um, uh, the sixteenth of this month. And I'll bring him to the council, next council meeting on the twenty-eighth for a badge pinning for him as well. Um, we also have our, another officer in background. Um, we're tentatively looking at March fifteenth to get that person on board. And I will bring them before you as well. That would bring us up to full staff with, uh, everybody in place. The only thing I'd be working on then would be, uh, filling our detective assignment. And I'd be looking at that after we get all our staffing on board. So that would be after the March fifteenth date. Um, also working on Homeland Security grant along with the county for the upcoming year and, uh, the spending of our last year's funding. So, um, uh, we'll be having some, uh, steel doors and some reinforcement on the, for the, for our building here. So. Um, and then we'll be, uh, also working on, um, uh, the, the, uh, federal vest program. We get about half of the cost of a vest, uh, as long as we participate with federal government. So we're working with, on that program. We've been doing it for about four years. Um, it's beneficial to, to us 'cause, um, our officers all come in different sizes. And as we get new ones on board, um, the, the cost of those vests are very, very pricey and this kinda gets that cost, at least half of it down. So it's, it gets a lot more manageable. Last thing I'm working on is, uh, looking to bring to you the administrative remedies and citation process. Um, it's going up to our staff tomorrow to kinda look at any holes and problems we may have with what I'm presenting at this point. Looking at, uh, filling, uh, any kinda gaps and problems we may think that we might wanna make changes on. Then we'll bring it forward to council for final review. So with that, I'll, and any kinda questions you may have?
Michael, I just had one. Um, we have on Hillsbury the new speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour.
Yes.
And I noticed you've had the mobile unit out there for number D now. Um, I haven't seen too many citations given out. I see a lot of speeders. I just, I just wonder if your program is just to introduce the people to the new speeds area?
Well, the, the trailer's actually an educational component. Our other educational component is the citations. And I can assure you that we've been, we've been writing a few. If you've read the Tuesday Review, we've, we've, uh, we've made the paper there as far as, uh, our enforcement. So, um, I, I, we are, we are trying to make some headway. That's just a very wide street and with the, the new turn lane and, and the changes out there, it's just something we're gonna have to keep on top of.
Yeah. I know. I, I travel at least four times a day on that, that road and, uh, I've not seen any citations and I see a lot of speeders. And I'm sure that you can't be out there all the time, but just, a lot of people are just not getting the message.
Yes. Well, that's, we were hoping through the educational component that, uh, that they would see what their speeds are and hopefully they aren't starting at thirty-five and going above that. But, uh, um, we're, we're gonna continue to work on that.
It's just intimidating that you're going thirty-five and somebody's trying to go sixty-five behind you.
Yes.
You get a lot of that. Anyway, thank you.
Well, we'll get them for speeding and for tailgating, huh? Thank you.
Chief, also, speaking of signs, when you turn off a thirty-three on the Sherman Parkway, I don't believe there's a speed limit sign there. Probably should think about putting one there.
That port, is that, that portion actually dedicated to the city, that Sherman Parkway? It is? Okay. Yes, we'll look at that.
Yeah. I just noticed that the other day. There was no speed limit sign there as soon as you turn off the highway onto there. So.
Yeah, that's interesting 'cause that's gonna be, what, twenty-five or something like that? Thirty, I hope it's thirty-five. I hope the guy keep the twenty-five there. Good. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Ernie, anything this evening?
I have a, uh, PowerPoint presentation, information about, uh, concerns regarding, uh, our swimming pool, problems that we're experiencing. So I think I'll stand over here so you can see it.
How big is that plaque?
I don't know. That's the first thing I was gonna say. I didn't, I didn't measure it. But as you can see, the, the pool was dedicated back in nineteen forty-eight and, um, so it's been around quite some time. Um, here is, what we use is a steel tank for, uh, for, that's the actual filter. It's a tank. It's six feet tall, six feet in diameter. It has some steel baffles inside the, inside the tank, crisscrossing throughout. The baffles are actually tubes with orifices in it that, uh, push the water through that tank. The tank is, um, filled with diatomaceous earth. It has sand. It has pea gravel. And that's what it's used for, uh, filter media. Here, here we, uh, that photo that we were showing was to give you a, um, relationship and so that you can see what the size of the tank by putting our tallest employee there next to it. Um, the, the hard water, the hard water and the chemicals and the other residue has hardened the, the filter media to a point that, uh, the water won't go through it. And so we can no longer backwash it and, uh, and filter out the water and all its impurities. Uh, right there, see this, that chunk right there is a, um, is the filter media that was removed about five years ago. Now, that hatch, that opening in that hatch is only, uh, twelve inches by eighteen inches. So they had to get a, a real little guy to get in there and with a hammer and chisel, actually chisel it all out. So, um, they gotta take it out piece by piece. We had a hard time finding somebody who was willing to give us a quote for the job. We finally got one from Pure Bright Pools from Turlock and they'll do that job for forty-one hundred dollars. The next slide is a antiquated electrical system. So at some point, uh, safety regulations may require its replacement and that could run into a few thousand dollars. The, the, the fuses that are being used in there are the screw-in type fuses. Um, this next, uh, photo is a picture of the recirculation pump. That was originally installed about twenty years ago. And then about eight years ago, it was refurbished. We put in, uh, new seals and, but now it's completely worn out. It's only pumping about a hundred and fifty gallons per minute. And in order to fully recirculate, uh, the water in a twenty-four hour period, like we are required to do, um, we need to be pumping anywhere from three hundred to four hundred gallons per minute. So the bottom line is this pump needs to be replaced in order to operate the pool. Replacement cost for this is about thirty-six hundred dollars. This is the, a photo of the deep end of the pool. As you can see, this is where everything goes down the drain. All the dirt and leaves and debris, they're all sucked into the, into the filter so that the water can be cleansed and it could be reused. The next photo shows a photo of the fill pipe. And as you can see, the buildup of deposits of the hard water inside the pipe and also along on the, on the pool wall. This photo shows the, um, the cracks throughout the bottom of the pool. And those cracks need to be sealed and, uh, and you can see that the paint coating is pretty much worn, worn, um, and, and it needs to be reapplied. Um, on the photo prior to this one and on this one, you can see, I wanted to show all the cracks right along the, uh, that area above that, that overflow gutter. And so what's happening is a lot of the water is seeping out and seeping down in, under those, uh, walkway areas. What, what this seepage has caused is, this next photo will show all the settling throughout the entire area. So, um, and also you can, you can see, you see, uh, this is a severe settle area in here. And these vertical cracks along there show where the, uh, we replaced, um, the recirculation pipes because they were all clogged up some years ago and we put in some plastic lines. Uh, the county, every year when they come and do an inspection, they always hit us up for a, uh, they noted in the report that there could be potential tripping hazards. So I don't know how long they're gonna let us get away with that. This is a, uh, a picture of dry rot in the, uh, up in the, in the area, the roof area of the check-in ru, in the check-in room where the kids check in and leave their, check in their clothes. The next photo, again, as you can see, all that wood rotting away and that is in the, in the boys' shower room, the changing area. That's a picture of the boys' shower room, the shower stalls. And of course, all those pipes are pretty clogged up. You hardly get any water coming out of there. And also the drain pipes, uh, are all, also built up with a lot of deposits. The next one that she went to was the dry rot in the girls' shower room area. And so as you can see, that's pretty severe in that area. This next photo is a ladies' shower room and, and same conditions apply as a boys' room. And as you can see, we have an out of order sign in that water closet because even professional plumbers couldn't get it unplugged. The floor pretty much has to be jackhammered out and have all the pipes replaced. And then that's the roof of the, of the girls' room and again, showing, uh, a lot of boards rotting away and missing. And, uh, the purpose of, uh, this report was so that we could assist you in making your decisions when, uh, the recreation director comes before you at the next budget, um, adjustment, uh, hearing, um, at council meeting. Uh, she's, I believe she's gonna be asking for additional monies. So the bottom line is to get the pool back into operation. You're looking at the, at the filter. It has to be refurbished for forty-one hundred dollars. The pump has to be replaced, thirty-six hundred. The pool has to be sandblasted, the cracks sealed and, and it painted for about seven thousand dollars. So we're looking at about fifteen thousand dollars to get the pool in working order if we wanna continue using it.
Well, I could tell you right now, and, and I remember when I walked fourteen years ago in that place with you when I first got on this council, uh, it was just a mess then. And I honestly can't spend another dime on that place. That is just ridiculous. I mean, it's totally ridiculous. I mean, you just look at that facility and we're gonna continue to patch and patch like we've been doing the last god knows how long. Long before I've been on the council, that's for sure. And, uh, you know, it goes back to something that I said when we started talking about this general plan and all these new developments that are coming in and everything else. And, you know, one of the things that Michael was able to do when, you know, there were some development agreements done, was able to get supplemental fees on some of these different projects that we have going. And, you know, and we've talked about it and I know we've gotten council concurrence on it, but for the life of me, I can't quite figure out why we don't have on the, uh, on our agenda. If we, we need to just include a community swimming pool in one of these new parks with these developments. I mean, we, th- this is just throwing money away. This is, you know, every dollar that we spend is just down the drain. It's a total waste of our money. Really is. And, you know, I, I just can't, I, I will never, and I will be on record in saying this, I will never vote to spend another dime on that pool again. It, it's, it's a waste. Really is. And, and I would ask the council yet again, and specifically ask Michael, that at the next agenda, at the next meeting, we, we need to start formulating specifically what kind of facilities that we want coming into our community. Whether it be a brand new swimming pool, whether it be whatever the case may be, tennis courts or whatever in our parks. We really need to be specific and lay that out and have some costs. Because that's one of the things that we talked about when we talked about those little, uh, the, the speed bumps out, uh, over here on Barrington. You know, trying to factor in some of those things that are already included in the cost so it doesn't come back on us at the end. And we, I, I request at the next meeting that we have that discussion on what specific facilities we want and press forward if there's a consensus on the council.
Yeah, sure. Get to, get to, uh, put something together. Get more fees. I agree. Ernie, um, so you're telling us at the next meeting, we'll have some official?
Um, I believe the recreation, uh, director will be approaching you because I think that's when we're gonna have our budget review, make your budget review.
At the next council meeting, I will be working with the, um, recreation director to provide you a full scope of work that is necessary. All costs incurred for both startup and operational costs that would occur, the number of people who tend to use it, revenues. We'll, we'll give you the, we'll give you the whole program at the next one so you can make an informed decision on, on this, on this particular structure. But with that though, I, I, I agree with Charles that we wanna start talking about, you know, some of these facilities in the future and how we can, you know, get them and prioritize them.
When you talk about the number of people using the pool, you're gonna consider swim teams and, uh, classes and...
I have a breakdown right here that's just basically from last year of how many people used the pool while it was in operation. Now, they're not unique people. They're, you know, could be the same person over and over at, at certain times. But, you know, there is approximately twenty-nine hundred people who utilized the pool for free swim last year. So, you know, that is a community amenity. So that's where the council has to look at their options and, and decide whether or not, you know, the investment that they have to make into is, is, is something they wanna pursue forward with.
Twenty-nine hundred people for the whole swim season?
That's just for the general admission. That's just for general swim. That doesn't include swim lessons, after school programs, summer school programs, field trips, aquatic camps. All told, all told, you're looking at about over five thousand people at one point in time utilized that pool last year. Over the entire length of that pool.
And that's specifically my point. Do we want that many people in that type of facility? Uh, and we're looking at other issues of liability, even more so than normal. And I just, I mean, we see... I mean, we see what type of use, that it just makes the point. We see what type of use we have in our facilities for that, and it's just... It's imperative. And I think one of the things that we've done, we've just continued to piecemeal it, and piecemeal it, and piecemeal it. And it's always been, okay, well, that's good enough, but that clearly is not good enough. You know, especially our community is growing even larger. This just isn't gonna cut it for our residents. And, you know, we see the participation, and, you know, we need to build something that is gonna be, uh, something that we can be proud of, not that.
Well, I agree that it's definitely in bad shape, but since we don't have a million dollars to build a new one, you know, we're doing the best we can to keep her going. So, you know, I'll wait till we get those official estimates, Ernie, hopefully. Was all that, those numbers you threw, was that from like one company or a bunch of different companies?
No, different companies. Nobody wants to come and touch the pool.
No one company will do all the work?
No one company will do all the work. They, uh... They don't want the liability because they know that if they work on it and something else isn't right, they, uh... They either... They say, uh, it's best to knock it all down and build a new one, you know? They'll fiberglass the inside of it and around the decking for fifty thousand dollars. They'll say that, but then you still have the problems with the shower rooms and everything else, all the drainage pipes underneath the...
Ernie, is that half the public health standards right now?
Right now, no, it doesn't. This is... This is why we're saying if... If we don't get this work done, we're not... We're not gonna be able to open for this coming year.
I'm talking about the structure part of the drive-off?
Oh, the structure part? No, they haven't... The... The lady who comes and inspects the pool is, uh... Mostly looks at the... The condition of the water, be sure that it's proper pH and it's chlorinated properly, that the filtration system is working and, uh, uh, that, uh, logs are kept for, you know, whatever, all the regulations that they have, having to do with more of with health and safety of the people who use it, not so much as the dry rot and, uh, the rest of that other stuff.
Why I would hate, following along, Charles, I would hate to put good money in the pool in a short-term period, and all of a sudden next year come back and say we're gonna condemn the whole thing because you have dry rot, it's a public hazard. So I think we need to take a look at that as well as everything else before we make a decision.
No, you're right, Councilman, and that's one of the reasons why I thought it was very important that I make this presentation to you, so that you could actually see what, uh... What is out there and so that you wouldn't think that if we just, uh, cleaned out the filter and put in the new pump that we're gonna be good to go for a long time, so...
What was the approximate cost, Ernie?
About fifteen thousand, and that's the filter, the pump, and, uh, sealing the cracks and repainting the pool. The inside of it.
This is all above budget, budget in this month?
Yeah, I don't, uh... I don't wanna speak for the recreation director's budget.
That's... That's one of the things that we are actually looking at right now, what is actually budgeted and what's not. That'll be included in your next report.
Go ahead and get that report together, and I guess it's Mary Kate that inspects that, right?
I believe so.
Maybe, uh, give her a courtesy call and tell her what we're... We're going to do if we can, and, you know, if we... If we get her going like we did last year, if everything's okay. You know, just so we know where we're at with her also.
Yeah, I'll... I'll ask, uh, Terry, tomorrow's a staff meeting, maybe we... Terry and I could get together with the county and talk with them and... And get their point of view also.
She's out here usually every couple of weeks anyway, or sometimes once a week, so...
Sometimes it's another lady, the name of Jamie something, I can't recall her last name.
Okay.
Uh, and then the other item that I wanted to let you know is that I'm still trying to, uh, get work going on the parking lot north of Barrington. Everybody is busy and they don't want little jobs, but, uh, I've been getting in touch with some people. I'm gonna meet, uh, some other land leveler that might be willing to move that dirt, um, on Thursday, probably Thursday evening, I'll meet with him, see if we can get that done. I've talked with, uh... With another, uh, um... Another guy who's willing to give us... That's gonna give me a proposal to do the driveways and, um, cutting and demolishing the, uh, the existing sidewalk so that they can install the driveway. So I'll have some of those numbers really soon, and, uh, at least we'll get those in and, uh, see... And see just how much we can get done, and as soon as we can. So I just wanna let you know I'm still working on it, so...
Thank you, Ernie. Don't want to have any other staff here, I think we're done with that. I have some city council members, Tim?
I was just surprised that Michael didn't mention about the workshop that was here, um, with the planning commissioners, from how many counties, Michael?
We had, uh, nearly seventy people from four different counties.
I just thought it was important to mention because, uh, we were able to showcase our theater once again, and Ferris actually came in and gave kind of a historical perspective from the leap of faith that previous council took, uh, Charles being seated at that time to purchase the theater. And, uh, it... It gives you a proud feeling of that particular facility. Uh, I... I say that because of the slides that I just saw, uh, were quite deplorable in terms of us continuing to try to still use that facility. Um, one thing that we spoke about tonight that I think is really important, I just recently, uh, was in Sacramento at our state capitol, and I attended a, um, a work session there put on by the Great Valley Center out of Modesto for our region, and it pretty much talks about San Joaquin Valley, uh, from Fresno all the way up to Redding, the central California as a region. Because one of the things that we found in politics per se is that Southern California and the Greater Bay Area get the preponderance of the funding. Uh, when you go down south and you see all the freeways and the highways, or, uh, you go over to, uh, the Greater Bay Area. So we're trying to get and gain that recognition, not just on the state level with our legislators, but nationally as a region, because you... It's not as if we've been, uh, discounted, but we just haven't been that visible. Uh, and... But we're feeling the impacts, and... And we know how vast our state is, and the Central Valley plays a really key core, particularly when it comes to agriculture. And I like to say that because you have a right to farm in these counties. And I think sometimes that's missed when we talk about all our growth and all of the housing element. But I... I attended that, and that's one of the things I think that it works well for us as a local, coming back to Newman, when we talk about collaborative efforts, just as we did when we were talking about Patterson, when we're talking about Gustine. And I would kind of like to see us, if we're talking along those levels, some more shared aspect when it comes to the pool, too, because I remember, uh, a presentation by the Westside Stingrays where they weren't somehow able to use the facilities in some of our neighboring cities the same way they were here. And I think it would behoove us to kind of talk along those levels, too, because I see us running into a problem. I don't know what the next presentation, uh, is going to be, but I know, like Charles was alluding to, I think I had a sheet physically where we had poured some million dollars, and I... I don't say that just to put it out there as if it doesn't exist, but over a time period, we've poured that kind of money into the existing pool, over time. And I... I think that's coming to an end, so... Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing further.
Patterson has broken ground on their new pool, but...
How long is it gonna take to rebuild it?
Just for a side note, Charles?
Nothing to say, thank you. Bob?
I have nothing, saving man.
Mike?
Thank you, I just wanted to remind my colleagues of the... The California City Divisional Dinner next Thursday at, uh, UC Merced Campus. Sure, all you've got a letter, um, need to let them know by Monday. Well, Monday's a holiday, so Tuesday. So if you're gonna go, please let Judy know, and she'll make reservations for us. And with that, that's all I had, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you.